All right, the light is on for us to go. And good evening, everyone, welcome. We have a lot of our wonderful Fire Department joining us this evening. So, welcome, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Teresa, could we have a roll call?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Ober.
Here.
Mayor Dunham.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a special presentation this evening. And with that, Chief Bradner, would you like to present the awards?
All right, well, thank you very much, Mayor and Counsel. If I could have Lynn Johnson come forward, please. So, as she's coming forward, I'll tell you, tonight, we're going to be recognizing three individuals from our community with certificates of appreciation from the Fire Department for actions that they took on emergency scenes that we responded on. So, on March 2nd of this year, Lynn Johnson was on her way to work, and she came upon a motor vehicle accident with an individual that had been thrown from his vehicle and was actually in critical condition. And she stopped and rendered first aid. And I'd like to read from -- we get a nomination form from individuals in our department to see these types of acts. So, I'd just like to read what it states in the nomination form. Lynn Johnson responded without reluctance or prompting to a chaotic, multiple-patient scene while demonstrating the composure necessary to provide timely and critical interventions that with delay or omission would have no doubt resulted in grave complications. These actions resulted in sustaining vital life functions without equipment, diagnostics, or advanced care in the field setting. This event displays the compassion and humanitarian commitment obligatory to the field of health care and underscores the difference that several minutes can make in viability of outcome. And with that, from the Fire Department, Lynn, we'd just like to thank you, and I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation that states presented to Lynn Johnson for selfless actions in providing life-safety assistance on March 2nd, 2016, presented before the Albany City Council on the 8th day of June 2016. And in addition to that, I would also like to present you with one of our Fire Department challenge coins and say thank you very much.[163.12][163.12](Applause). And could I now have Richard Olson and Paul Masara come forward, please? So, on the evening of January 19th of this year, there was a vehicle, I believe it was a pickup truck, if I remember correctly, that went into the canal, just down here a ways, if I remember correctly. And Richard Olson was a bystander who witnessed the event occur. And as has been told to me, he ended up getting out to see if he could render aid, and the pickup truck was actually teetering on the side of the canal and partly submerged in the canal with an occupant and his dog, and started trying to hold the vehicle back while calling 911. And then Paul was a neighbor who lives right there in that area, and Paul heard the accident, and Paul came out to see if he could render aid, and they realized that they needed a strap, and then Paul ran home to get some type of a tow strap, and they were able to secure the pickup truck to another vehicle to keep it from going any further. Their actions at night undoubtedly kept the truck from going all the way into the canal and actually becoming submerged completely, where the occupant would have most likely drowned. And so, because of that, their quick actions and what they did that night, we're going to present also a certificate of appreciation to Richard Olson and Paul Masara for selfless actions in providing life-safety assistance on January 19th, 2016, presented before the Albany City Council on the 8th day of June 2016. And in addition to that, we'll also be presenting to you one of our Fire Department coins as well.[271.27][271.27](Applause). All right, thank you.
Amazing. I remember seeing those and reading them in the paper, and I just can't imagine what went through your minds when all of that was taking place. But, wow, it takes a lot of strength and a lot of courage, and, boy, I commend you, and we were grateful, too. So, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, that's it for special presentations this evening. And Counsel, next, for scheduled business is communication. And this would be accepting Jeff Christman's resignation from the Budget Committee. This is on page four.
That was my error. I was thinking it was my appointment, and it was Rich's. So, I would move that we accept Jeff's resignation and send the letter of gratitude.
Second.
And any discussion? Or was it Rich's appointment?
It is mine.
Yeah, it's Rich's. Okay. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Counsel, we have a lot of scheduled business to take care of this evening, and we've got a lot of public hearings, so it's going to take a little bit of patience here to get through them. First, for a public hearing, I will open it up at 7:20 PM, and this is for setting rates for wastewater system use and repealing resolution number 6427. And Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Counsel, I'm not going to be repeating the PowerPoint presentation, but we are going to post that on the web and on the cable channel, so that will be out for the public to see. I just want to hit the highlights of the sewer rate presentation for the audience, the Counsel, and the public that may be watching. So, this is our annual discussion on sewer rates. We started this process about five years ago, working with the Counsel to set a goal for sewer funding that would help us to make progress in perpetual life replacement and maintaining an adequate revenue basis for the sewer fund. The primary goal of sewer rates first are to pay the debt service that we've incurred by investing in our wastewater facilities. Then we pay for the operation and maintenance needs of our existing facilities. And finally, with the money that we have left, we invest in capital projects to improve our wastewater program. Last year, staff estimated that we would need a 6% increase this year, but based on revenue and expenditure updates, that rate increase has been reduced to a 3% rate increase that would become effective July 1st. 3% would generate about an additional $500,000 for the sewer fund. And the impact to the average residential customer of 3% increase is an increase of about $1.59 a month for residential customers who are charged based on six units. For those that use a little bit more, eight units, that increase would be about $1.75 per month. To put that in another context, the average residential customer pays less than $2 per day for sanitary sewer service in the city. And when you combine sewer and water, the average residential customer pays about $3.18 a day for both water and sewer service in the city, to try to give context for the rate increase. The funding has allowed us to generate enough capital revenue that we have been able to implement an asset management program that has given us a really nice foundation for our wastewater system. We've been able to accomplish quite a bit of pipe replacement work that has resulted in better service to our sewer customers. For example, when we started this program, we had a statistic that we had 13 emergency sewer repairs in a five-month period. Those are failures of the sewer system that either block a customer's flow or create a sinkhole or some other emergency that has to be dealt with right away. In the past year, we've had a grand total of three of those types of emergency repairs that we've had to deal with. So, that's created a little bit of stability that's allowed us to take our capital funding and try to use that to fund a necessary capacity project, which wasn't initially part of the goal of this program, but has been a nice benefit. So, we've been able to program funding for the Cox Creek Interceptor projects in the CIP. So, those will be put in place over the next five years. We've also improved the condition of our system. We've started with almost 90,000 linear feet of pipe that's in the worst condition, based on our scale. We're down to about 68,000 linear feet of pipe, that are pipe five pipes, and that number consistently is dropping. I do want to note that the rate increase does not include funding for other large projects, such as the Riverfront Interceptor Project, which we've described to Counsel that has significant capacity-related problems that we will have to address in the near future, nor does it provide funding for the wastewater treatment plant solids project, which we'll also be addressing, hopefully, within the year. Our projected rate increases for the next five years are a flat 5% per year. However, as we've seen every year, we've had to come back and provide new updates on that, so this time next year, we'll be talking again about sewer rate increases for the next few years. So, that's it on the memo and presentation. I did want to call to your attention some replacement pages for the resolution that were handed out. We made an error in the significant industrial user fee was not changed in the original packet that came out, so that fee is actually going up to $637. This matches exactly the fee that the city has to pay to the Department of Environmental Quality for SIU permits. And, right, so the correct number was in the memo, it just didn't get added to the resolution correctly. So, that's the first correction. And then there was also a question on the next page about fees for commercial and contracted waste haulers. And we added the language here, the numbers here, that show that the fee was recalculated, it just didn't result in an increase. So, there's a strike through, although the actual number charged, 15 cents per gallon, is the same, but the third digit did change. So, we wanted to show that it was recalculated, it just didn't result in a change. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I just have one. Chris, it says that the discharge permit fee pays exactly what DEQ has asked for. Do other cities get more, or do they stay the same, you know, where it's kind of a wash?
You know, I'm not sure. I think there probably are some cities whose pre-treatment programs recover from the permitted industries money beyond the permit fee. In our case, we do not. So, the permit is, the fee that we pay to DEQ is recovered from the industries, but the staff time and expenses to implement and manage and write those permits is not recovered from the industries.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there anyone that would like to comment on this wastewater increase from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Then with that, 7:28 PM, I'll close a public hearing. And Counsel, what would you like to do with this item? There is a resolution on page 13, and the resolution, then, acknowledgement would be of the replacement pages for page 19 and 20.
Move for adoption of the resolution with the replacement pages.
Okay.
Second.
And there's a second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, next, so I will open the public hearing, then, at about 7:28 PM, and this is going to be for adjusting system development charges and connection charges. So, staff, have any comments on this?
Jenny's going to give the presentation.
Jenny, okay.
Thank you.
And this public hearing, then, is, this is for all of them, from 2A through K.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. System development charges are SDCs. The connection fees and the level of assessments are in place to ensure that as the community develops, new development helps pay a share of the cost of services.
(Laughter).
Each year, these fees and charges are evaluated for a potential increase based on the Engineering News Record, or E&amp;R magazine, which tracks the cost of construction. The closest index, and the one that Albany has used historically, is the Seattle Regional Index. Before you tonight are 11 resolutions. One repeals the North Albany Sewer and Low of Assessment fee, and the remaining 10 resolutions include annual fee adjustments based on the one-year change in the Seattle E&amp;R index of 1.85%. The Albany Municipal Code says that the increases are made automatically, however, it's been Counsel's longstanding tradition to hold a public hearing. Should these adjustments be adopted tonight, they would become effective July 1st. There are three items that I'd like to point out, too, this year. The Transportation SDC, on page 33, was originally set up with a five-year ramp that called for annual fee steps in addition to the E&amp;R adjustment. Last year was the final year of that ramp, and the 2016 proposed fee reflects only the E&amp;R adjustment. One of the resolutions in your packet, as I mentioned on page 58, repeals the North Albany and Low of Assessments for sewer work that was done in the early 1990s. Earlier, the shared counsel determined that the city had been adequately reimbursed for this investment, and this resolution officially repeals those assessments. The last item I'd like to point out is the last resolution in the packet, page 64, and it recognizes that the construction-related fees in the post-construction stormwater quality program should be adjusted to keep pace with the changing cost of public improvement projects. The permit fee itself for design review and construction inspection activities is percentage-based, and still notice that that has not been changed. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions? All right, okay, thank you, Jenny. Is there anyone that would like to comment on these items? This is system development charges from 2A through K. Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32 PM. And Counsel, this can all be done in one motion, but they have to be listing each resolution by page number.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of the following resolutions, page 31, 33, 42, 52, 53, 55, 57, 58, 59, 63, and 64. Second.
Okay, motion's been made. Comments? Okay, yeah, Rich?
I would like to say I approve of doing a whole bunch of them at the same time. It's that whole thing of, is we come back each time, and was my point before, we come back each time and tell people we're going to raise something a little bit, and we justify it, and it leaves them with the impression that we're always raising their prices, even though it's the same amount of money, a small amount each time. I like to do it all at once to get it over with, so it doesn't bother them. And that way, they don't bother us, only once.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried for all. Next would be item, this is three, and this is still public hearing, so with that, at 7:33 PM, I will open the public hearing for our capital improvement program for the adoption. And which staff's going to take care of that? Jeff?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Before you tonight is the resolution to adopt the 2017 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program. The preparation of the CIP is a long process that starts early in the fiscal year and coincides with the budget process. During this process, input is received from various departments, City Council, Budget Committee, Planning Commission, and the public. After the April 7th joint work session, the CIP funding draft is made available for public review in May. No public comments were received this year. The result of the month's process is the resolution is before you tonight for adoption. And with that, we'll be answering questions.
Okay, any questions with Jeff? All right, no? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item, which is for adopting the 2017 to 2021 Capital Improvement Program? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, at 7:34 PM, I will close the public hearing. And Counsel, you do have a resolution on page 67.
I move for adoption of the resolution on 67.
Second.
Okay, and comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Jeff. And next is another public hearing, and this one I'll open up at 7:35 PM, and this is for the state revenue, city's eligibility to receive state revenue sharing. Staff have comments on this? Yep.
I could make a brief summary, Mayor. Thank you. On May 10th, the city received the proposed budget, and part of the budget includes receiving state shared revenues in the proposed budget that was presented to the Budget Committee and the City Council. Those revenues are used in support of the transit system in the city of Albany. There's a requirement in receiving those revenues requires two public hearings to be held. One was held with the Budget Committee, an opportunity for public comment at that time. The second opportunity is this evening for the City Council to receive comment regarding the uses, proposed uses of state shared revenues in the proposed budget. There are two actions that the City Council would consider after receiving the comment in the public hearing, and one would be to declare the city's eligibility to receive the state shared revenues, and secondly, the city's desire to receive those revenues. So, if there are other questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Okay, questions? All right, okay, thank you, Stuart. So, with that, is there anyone that would like to comment on this? This is item 4A and B, and this is over the proposed use of state revenue sharing. Okay, not seeing anyone. So, with that, at 7:37 PM, I will close the public hearing. And Counsel, you have two different actions here. The first one's a resolution on page 69.
Move to adopt resolution on page 69.
Second.
Okay, and any comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. This is a resolution on page 70.
Move to adopt the resolution on page 70 to receive state funding.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, and our last public hearing, and this is our big one for budget, so at about 7:38 PM, I will open up the public hearing, and this is for 2016, 2017 annual budget. And Stuart, is that yours again?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. As I was mentioning, on May 10th, the city's Budget Committee convened, and the city manager presented a proposed budget to the Budget Committee. That evening and two subsequent evenings, department directors presented the needs and operating conditions in the various operating departments to the Budget Committee, and there was deliberation by the Budget Committee in meetings on May 10th, May 17th, and May 19th. And on May 19th, the city's Budget Committee approved the budget that was proposed by the city manager with one change, and that one change was to appropriate revenues that became available after the voters had adopted the public safety levy. So, that would be a change from the proposed budget to the approved budget by the Budget Committee, and those changes are reflected in the resolution that's before the City Council this evening, following public comment and consideration of adopting the budget for fiscal year 2016, '17.
Okay, questions with Stuart? Okay, with that, is there anyone that would like to comment from the public on our annual budget? Okay, not seeing anyone. So, with that, at 7:39 PM, I will close the public hearing. And Counsel, you do have a resolution on page 72.
Move to adopt the resolution with the changes outlined by the finance director.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion a second. So, okay, any discussion?
I just would like to note that the paper indicated when Gourvalis adopted their budget, they had ice cream served.[1507.13][1507.13](Laughter).
(Inaudible).
They had a smaller budget also.
Must have been their new city manager.[1517.13][1517.13](Laughter).
I think Mark must have been paying off the staff for their hard work in developing the budget.
And I do think this year's budget was a little bit shorter in time. I think it was a total of about nine hours spent instead of 10 the year before, so it's really still a lot of hours that the Budget Committee puts in reviewing the whole budget. So, it might look like we're just making a motion or approving it, but there was a lot of work put into reviewing that budget, and a lot of work staff does into preparing that budget, too. So, I really, really appreciate staff's work on it.
And since this is the last budget that Stuart will be overseeing or working through, I'd like to public.
Oh, no, 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 he's still here.
It's the last one B deals with.
(Inaudible). That's what I deal with.[1571.13][1571.13](Laughter). How about Jim? (Inaudible). Remember, Mike, I'm going to start that again next year, then.[1586.13][1586.13](Laughter).
Okay, any other, any discussion on the budget?
Do we dare? (Inaudible).
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, that's it for our public hearings. Next, we have is, which is amazing, that was a lot of motions we made, but that was actually 75 pages that the Counsel had to review in order to be making these. Yes, a lot of work, so, good job. Next is business from the public. Anyone here that would like to bring an item for it? Yes, Bill?
You'll need to state your name, address, and phone number.
Yeah.[1632.63][1632.63](Laughter).
Number of adult children and whether or not you like them.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live at 2634 North Worth Valley View in North Albany. And probably you can guess why I'm here tonight. I've heard a couple of comments from a couple of people that they read my letter in the editor in the newspaper, and a couple of people mentioned that they had gotten some phone calls. So, that's good. That was why I did that. Kind of a short outline of what I said in my letter was, my yard waste container fills up very rapidly, and I went down to the Republic to see what options they had available. The cost for me for the 32-gallon trash container, which includes every other weekly yard waste pickup, is $36.62 every two months. The 90-gallon trash container is $57.62. It's $21 every two weeks higher. If I was to take a load of yard waste to the compost facility, up to a total of 500 pounds, it's a $20 minimum. If I bought a, got a second yard waste container, it would cost an additional $17.68, again for the billing cycle, which is every two weeks.
Every two months.
Two months.
The Republic has proposed a couple of times that they would allow people to put their kitchen waste in with their yard waste, and they would pick it up on a weekly basis for the additional cost of $2 a month. They have proposed that at least twice that I know of, and both times, the City Council has turned it down. I've proposed it a couple of times, and the City Council has turned me down. The last time I proposed that, Bessie Johnson, I'm not going, I'm going to start with you, I'm not picking on you.
That's okay.
I start something. The last The last time, Bessie Johnson said that she didn't have much kitchen waste. And I assume from that, you probably have the 32 gallon container, and it probably's not gonna be a big help to you. Mr. Coburn, I never did figure out why you were opposed to it, so I'm gonna skip you. You're lucky. Dick Olson, Dick Olson, I drive by your house twice, or three times a week at least. I know that you have some big trees in front of your house, and there's lots of leaves. And the city comes around a number of times a year, I don't know how many, at least some in the fall, and cleans up all those leaves and takes them away from you. They don't do that for me. On my house, I do not have curbs and gutters or sidewalks. And even if I did, it wouldn't help me. My property sits somewhere between two and three feet below the level of the road. Most of my leaves are on my property, they're not on my road. So even if they did come around and sweep them, it wouldn't have a big impact. Floyd Collins, you're next. Floyd, you stated that it was important that the kitchen waste would go into the landfill so that it would help break down the other stuff that's in the landfill. I mentioned that to the lady I was talking to, she says, you're absolutely right, except you're wrong. What they want is they want it to go where it will do the most good. And where it will do the most good is not in the landfill, but in the compost facility. She said that if it was in an arid area like Nevada or Arizona, that would be a different story. But here in the wet western Willamette Valley, say that five times fast, it's a different story. They don't need it. They have enough moisture that goes into their landfill all the time to help break down the other stuff, so they don't need kitchen waste to help break it down. Ray Kapinski, you're a lot like Bill Coburn, I couldn't figure out why you didn't approve it, so I'm skipping you.
Probably just being an extra feed I had that didn't need to be added on.
Rich Kellum, Rich Kellum, he said that there wasn't enough people that were interested. Did you get any phone calls, Rich?
One.
One, that was it?
I got one too.
Actually, excuse me, that's incorrect. They did not get me on the phone.
Okay.
We did communicate however.
In any event, when I went down to Republic to get all of my information, they said that they had sent out a survey to the people that were customers of theirs, and they, and for all of the people that responded to the survey, 68% of the respondents were in favor of this. That's gotta prove something. That says to me that there is desirability for this out there. 68%? You think that Hillary Clinton would like to get 68% in any of the states? I think so, okay. So, that's the end of that part. Now.
Well, I think also Bill, though, if I remember right, they would be supportive of it, but they didn't want to pay for it.
Right.
Isn't that right?
Yeah. That was, that was basically what I was hearing as well.
Yeah, they were showing that they wanted, yeah, it'd be nice to have that, you know, second, but they didn't want to pay for it.
Somebody else will pay for it.
That's where it, you know, the council had to make this.
So that's, that's my next argument. That's where we're gonna start again. Okay, so what I brought with me today, these are my bills, my utility bills, and, and I will admit, my wife and I are very conservative, so the amounts that we have on here are probably gonna be much less than a lot of the people. We use a 32 gallon cart, and it is $32.62 every two months. My water bill, $38.33, so that's twice what I paid for the garbage. My electricity bill, $36.33 a month, that's twice what I paid. My Northwest Natural Gas, $82 a month, that's four times as much. My Verizon, which is my cellular telephone for myself and my wife, it's $110, excuse me, $116.60 a month. That's 10 times. No, excuse me, that's five. Here's the 10 times. My bundled Xfinity, which includes internet, telephone, and television, is $204.87 a month. My point is, that's a good buy, even at an additional $4 a building cycle, my cost is still only $40. So it's a lot less than any other utility. And actually, anybody that has a 90 gallon cart, that you could actually reduce that amount by putting it in your yard waste container, the kitchen trash, and you could actually reduce the cost by converting from a 90 gallon to a 32 gallon, and that would save you a total of $16. So, oh, one other, one other item, as I was talking to this lady, she said that she was, Republic is ready to go, all they need is approval from the City Council. This is one of the things that I feel very strongly about. I, I do not put typically any organic material in my trash container. I put, yeah, yard waste goes in the yard waste container and goes in the recycle. I try to avoid putting the other stuff, but during this time of year, I have to, I don't have a choice. I still have probably more leaves on my property still from last year than probably anybody else in here combined, and I've used it all year long. So, not only me, but my neighbors would appreciate it too. One of my neighbors commented last year, in the middle of the leafing season, there were a few fires going on, people were burning leaves. And, and, and that's something that's not a good idea. That's something that's causes, is not helping our environment. Putting organic material in the landfill is not helping our environment. We can help our environment by putting the kitchen waste in with the yard waste and composting it. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
And I did get quite a few phone calls and some emails.
Well, good, I put your name on there specifically for that, and also Wes there.
Yeah, quite a few.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any comments or anything? Yeah, Rich?
I may not be the best to comment on this from, on the desk, because I don't use the garbage service. It costs me $2 a month to get rid of mine, because I provide light for my next door for his security, and he lets me use his. I guess one thing I'd point out however, when there's 68% of the people who responded, what percentage of people responded? You know, if, if people out there really want this, great. I just, from my perspective, I don't hear enough people saying, gee, I need an extra one, or I need it every week, or, or something, that, that they have that many, many leaves. So, good luck. I mean, realistically, being a guy who, who, who gets up and talks, it's a, that's, that's what the council would need to hear, is enough people say that's what we're looking for. And I haven't heard it, so maybe I just messed up big time and I'm gonna get 19 calls on the backside.
I would disagree with the process that was just outlined. If, if, we only approve what is proposed to us by Republic or review theirs, we don't take individual comments on garbage bills. If Republic comes to us and makes a proposal, then we consider that. I don't think it's up to us to have that kind of public input until we hear something from Republic. They're the provider of the service, not the city. We just acknowledge their rates. So if they really think that the community is, I think it's their burden to come to us, tell us what their customers want, what kind of data as Rick suggested they have, and then we have a conversation with Republic.
And actually, that's one of the things that the lady mentioned, but, that they're ready to go. If you guys are willing, they'll be back, yeah?
They can come talk to us anytime.
But when they came to us last, they didn't recommend that we, they didn't think there was enough support, you know, support from the customers for it.
Part of the conversation I remember was Corvallis maybe had a little higher interest, but that was also being driven by Samaritan Hill.
Well, actually, at this time Salem, Corvallis, and Lebanon are all doing this. We're the only large city in the mid Willamette Valley that's not.
Right, Floyd's right. If Republic's interested, then they should get ahold of Wes, I guess, and Mayor will schedule it.
I agree with Floyd that it's up to Republic to ask their customers whether they would like it. And if there's a majority of their customers that would like it, then I would consider.
I'm sorry, they, they did.
If Republic Services questions their customers, sends out a questionnaire.
They did.
They did.
They sent out a survey, and 68% of the people responding said they wanted it.
No, they wanted it, but then when the other question on the survey said, would they support it, an increase in rates, and they said no, there wasn't support for that part. So they wanted the service but didn't want to pay for the service. That's the part of the survey was done. That's why they didn't recommend to us to add that service, because it didn't show in their survey that there was a financial support for it. Wanted, wanted the service but didn't want the additional cost. I personally would love to have it. We go through a lot of, you know, yard waste from our, you know, garden and trees, and we're always borrowing our neighbors' cans.
And there has been updated, Republic, in response to your letter, Bill, Republic, we asked Republic what their, what they would need to increase rates to offer that service now, and the answer was somewhere between $3 and $3.50 a month more. So then the quotation has gone up since.
Well, the quotation I got was $2.
Well, I can show you the email from Republic Services.
That was, $2 was the information they told us 18 months ago or two years ago?
Yeah.
And I think this number is recent.
Is recent.
The other thing they told us when we had the discussion, Bill, if you remember correctly, is it wasn't a matter of only billing those people who would like the service, it was a matter of a consistent charge across all users, whether you wanted that extra service or not.
Absolutely.
So the question I would have with them, of the 68% responding, was that 10% of their customer base that maybe in your case wanted it? Or was that 75% of their customer base that represented a majority of all users? There are wee people on fixed income that don't want to pay that, even though it's relatively nominal fee to you. I'll guarantee you, we'll hear some comment that fixed income folks don't want even that addition, because they don't need it.
But it's good for the environment. I, I think you guys are missing that. I think that, I think that you should be looking at the next level and do what is right for the environment, even if it does cost you a little more.
Mayor, if, to that point, if they were going to put it in with the, you know, you're talking leaves and yard debris and food waste, and they're going to put that and, and then take it over and, and roll it and, and break it down.
Right.
And use that as, you know, why couldn't they, why couldn't they add the food waste with the, with the containers they use now, and that would give you the?
Absolutely can't. The, the big difference is they would provide it on a weekly basis.
Well, no, I mean, to the point that it is good for the environment, the food waste would then get into the system to, to give it nutrients.
Right.
And they could do it with the one they have. If, if there aren't enough people ready to stand up and say, yes, I want it and I want to pay something for it, then it would, they'd be okay with putting food waste in the current containers to make it work.
And the issue I remember was that they didn't want it to sit there for two, thirteen days. You know, they dump it yesterday, and today you put food waste in there, two weeks.
And, and I think you're missing one of my points, Rich, is I, I'm not so much concerned, my yard waste, my kitchen waste is by Bessie Johnson. I have a 32 gallon container that 90% of the time is less than half full. I have one small bag, that big a rim, that's it, is my typical kitchen waste. What I'd like to have is once every week on the yard waste. I would pay extra for it, but I don't want to pay $17.68 for it, where I can get it for three and a half.
Yeah. I, I would suggest, Bill, to maybe just let folks kind of contact Republic Services and kind of advocate at that level, to show that this is an important, you know, in our community for the environment and for that service, and have them come, bring that proposal to us.
Okay, I, I will continue.
Because maybe they could do another updated survey to their customers.
I'll, I'll continue working with Republic. Is there contract coming up recently?
I think we just did it, didn't we?
We, the, they have a, the franchise is a multi-year franchise, it can be terminated, but we don't, we don't, typically what they will do is on an annual basis bring a report to us, along with any proposals that they have for changes in rates. And they did that last, I think they do it around the first of the calendar year, is my recollection. So, we're not scheduled. We've, they had a report to us on another issue a couple of weeks ago, but, but they can come anytime, and they know that. I mean, for that matter, I can call them and convey the message.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Well, thank you.
Okay, yeah, good conversation, so thank you, Bill. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Larry? Nope? Okay, all right. With that, next we have some resolutions, and first, this is revising fees and charges for Parks and Recreation Services, and repealing another resolution 6440. This is a resolution on page 78.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
And there's a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, this is authorizing execution of two intergovernmental agreements with the city of Lebanon for shared use of the Saniam Albany Canal. This has been an issue that's been going on for quite a long time, and we finally have a resolution to it. Jeff, did you want to say any comments?
No staff report tonight, I think we've, we've talked a lot about this subject, I just want to say that Chris and I are very excited to be at this point in the process and bring this before you tonight. And I just received a text a couple minutes ago from Lebanon engineering staff that Lebanon authorized execution of the resolutions just a little bit ago, so we're hoping you follow suit. Thank you.
Great, okay, there is a resolution on page 84.
Add move to adoption of the resolution on page 84.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion?
I'd just like to comment and acknowledge the work of both the Lebanon staff and our staff. If we recall, we were on the verge of litigation, and we took a step back and asked staff to go talk staff to staff, and try to get some of the motion out of it, and get down to something that was beneficial to both communities. And I just appreciate both this council and the Lebanon council letting staff have that opportunity. And I think we came out with a very positive document.
Yes, there was compromise on both sides, that's the way it should work, and it worked well, and I think we've got a better relationship.
And I think we've got a better relationship with, between the two cities because of it. Thank you.
I do, too. Yeah. This has been going on for almost 20 years that, and I remember Counselor Reed for many years wanted to see, you know, more of a new agreement. And so, this has been longstanding, and it's, I just appreciate everybody working together and getting this resolved, so, yep. And and Jim, you had some kind of tough times going through it, but you did it. Thank you.
I was forced to fit dirt.
Exactly.
No, I think that the main credit, I think, ought to go to engineering staff for finding a solution that had not been considered when we were at loggerheads. Staff, public works staff, found a technical solution that made it work for both communities. That's really the difference in my judgment. Before, we were at loggerheads because we had no solution that didn't involve a lot of money on the Albany end. When staff discovered the ability, or really became aware of the ability to divert a lot of Lebanon stormwater through the Mark Slough option, and Lebanon expressed a willing to do, a willingness to do that, all of a sudden, we had an alternative to contract language. We had a physical way to solve the problem. And that's, as a social scientist, I will tip my hat to the scientists for coming up with a better way.
Yes, and also getting resolution two for the council's, you know, big concern was over stormwater. So, you know, making sure that we're, you know, being good stewards of that canal, so I appreciate that. Okay, and we have a motion. A second? Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Next is another resolution. This is revising fees for development code provisions and repealing resolution number 6345. And this is resolution, that's on page 105.
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, this is accepting the abstract of votes regarding ballots cast and election held Tuesday, May 17, 2016, regarding measure 22141, the renewal of the ambulance, fire, police, local option tax. This is a resolution, that's on page 109. And this was probably our, let's see, our fourth campaign for, fourth time for Miss Levy, and this was the best percentage of approval we've ever had, so.
Move to adopt the resolution. Are we supposed to use the resolution that's on the dais tonight?
Yes, there's a replacement.
Not the one on page 109.
Thank you, Counselor. So, replacement one of page, for 109, page 109.
What's the difference?
Yeah. And was there a motion?
There was.
Was there a second? Okay. All right, any discussion?
Votes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we have adoption of a consent calendar, just only three items. If there isn't any items that need to be removed to be discussed this evening, entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And motion carried. We are moving right along here, folks. Next is award of bid, and this is for the Yumitila lift station and horse mane improvements. And staff, have any comments on this?
Stacy, you want to come up? You've been sitting here the whole time. Might as well come up.
Your turn.
This memo is a recommendation to award a contract for work to the Yumitila lift station to Pacific Excavation. They're a contractor located in Eugene, Oregon. The project includes installation of new pumps, supporting instrumentation, probably the largest portion of the project is installation of a new horse mane that's going to be installed using directional drilling methods. It's going to be running from Yumitila Street east down 29th Avenue, and then it includes the crossing of Highway 99. The work's going to basically reroute wastewater to a different location, so it'll help surcharging issues that we've had in, had in the basin. Again, the bid was $235,690, which the engineer's estimate was $260,000, and is under budget by $199,100. Are there any questions?
Yeah, actually, so we've only received two bids. So, are we starting to see kind of a lower amount of turnout for bids on projects?
You know, I think it's a combination of bidding late in the season and their specialized work. Nearly half of the bid was the directional drilling, so there's not as many contractors that do that.
Okay.
And so, I think that had a lot to do with with not receiving as many bids.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, it's, I'm good, it's, I'm glad to see that it's being awarded to a company that we have used quite often, so that makes it nice for staff for, for working with a company that's got some history here, but, yeah. Okay, Counselor?
Just like to comment, I'm glad to see the Yumitila basin getting the attention. In 1998, one of my first experiences here was having to face Dean Roberts and his wife when their basement flooded with the kids sleeping on the floor in sleeping bags. And then, if I remember correctly, this pump station is directly in the backyard of Helen Bern Sharp.
Yes.
And when we had a problem, I had a problem. So, I'm glad to see it moving forward.
Yes. Okay, any questions? Stacy?
Stacy, do we need?
I guess I have a question.
Yeah.
Stacy, I noticed when it said the per, project components and estimated cost, that the project budget was like $575,000, over/under was almost $200,000, and yet it came in, that engineers estimate was $260,000. I mean, there's a huge difference there, and I just wondered what that could be.
Yeah, I think that, that, I don't know the specifics, but I think that staff was able to identify cost saving during design.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Like off the pace down.
All right, great, thanks.
Do we have a motion for?
Um, no, not yet, but I think Jeff was going to say something.
This may be just a question for Jim. It didn't mention the minor bid irregularity, and I don't know if that waiving that minor irregularity needs to be a part of the formal motion or not?
It should be.
Okay.
It's in the requested action. If we just moved the requested action on page 121, it includes the waiving of the minor bid irregularity.
Okay, do you want to make that motion?
I would, I would make that motion to approve the requested action on page 121, which is the award of bid and waiving the minor bid irregularity.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, last page here, and this one is approval of the agreement. This is for the Albany Police Station wetland mitigation credits, approving execution of the agreement to purchase wetland mitigation credits between the City of Eugene and City of Albany. Okay, is there any comments? Is this one yours, Stacy?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay, yep.
So, this is a recommendation that council approved execution of the agreement between Albany and the City of Eugene to purchase 2.86 mitigation credits from Eugene Coyote Prairie North Mitigation Bank. This bank is the only one in our service area that is publicly owned in the region. The cost to purchase the 2.86 credit is $164,307. The the budget for wetland credits for the police station project was $205,000, so, so it is under the projected budget. Purchasing the wetland mitigation credit, it's required to secure the wetland permit that is required for construction of the new police station. The two agencies which issue the permit, the Division of State Land and Army Corps of Engineers, have both agreed that Eugene's Coyote North Mitigation Bay both meets the service area and has the the type of credits that are needed to mitigate the wetlands that are going to be disturbed or impacted on the police station's property. Both agencies are ready to issue the wetland permit as soon as the city purchases the credit, with the exception that the Army Corps of Engineers still needs the DEQ's 401 water certification. I talked to DEQ's manager yesterday, and they already have the draft written. We expect it early next week at the latest, so, so that is in the works. Our wetland consultant did look at different banks in our service area, and in general, the cost for, for credit for square foot for the banks were $1.54, and Eugene's was a lot less, it was $1.32. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions?
Not, not of Stacy, but, well, I don't think we have a lot of choice to deal with this within the existing regulatory framework. I just find the whole process of wetland mitigation in the Wilama Valley of prior farmlands inside of urban growth boundaries objectionable. And it's a failure of our state agencies to recognize the conflict between state agencies and setting up standards with the inside of urban growth boundaries.
You know, I had, I I agree to that, I agree with point. When you, you look at this, you know, particular parcel here that has been just in an urban area for many years, surrounded by development, you know, it is next to a waterway. So, you know, I understand there could be some value there for that wetland, and wetlands are very important and essential to water quality, but does it do any good to be mitigating wetlands here that's in our watershed or our basin down to a, another basin that's, you know, 50 miles away? And that's where, to me, to have to go through this process, and it's, to me, that's where the the regulatory process needs to be revised. Because what good does it really do if it's supposed to be essential to our area, and then all of a sudden, okay, it's okay to move that wetland, you know, 50 miles away? So, that, I agree, that whole process really needs to be revised and looked at, but, but I do commend you for kind of working with City of Eugene to be able to get this resolved.
But at least it's one of Wilama drainage basin. It's permissible to buy that wetland credit entirely out of Wilama Valley, which makes no sense at all.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I know, I fully agree. It's not right, so, yeah. Okay, all right. What would you like to do and decide on?
I would move the staff recommendation on page 125.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, business from the council. Bessie, anything?
I just want to say that I'm looking forward to the industrial tour we're coming, coming up on, what, the 19th, I believe it is?
Yep, next week.
And it was very interesting, the restrictions that we have in some of our industrial businesses and stuff, but, you know, I can understand.
Right.
It's like, okay, we're, we're not going anywhere.
Right, their, their questionnaire application said to submit a passport or a birth certificate. So, I don't have a passport, and I don't think they want my birth certificate where it's really my maiden name, so if they want to know who I am, it's.
I just copied my driver's license.
Well, let's see, you got to have your driver's license. I'm just submitting my driver's license.
I guess I can't go. I don't know where my birth certificate is.
Oh, is that right?
I never go anywhere.
So, I'm surprised it didn't say, or, or you'd like your driver's license or something, but it, it said on there, passport or birth certificate.
When Dick said that, that reminded me of an old Red Skelton skid. He lost his college degrees, he had to go back and take college classes, and he lost his high school diploma, had to go back to high school. Then he figured out he lost his birth certificate and says, I'm not going.
By way of explanation, that whole process, if you do military work, that comes down from above.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's much like the standards that are used for drug tests and that kind of stuff. It's, you do this, you shall, you know?
I understand, and I have no problem with it, but it was, it's an interesting process.
I figured they must be mostly men that go through the tours, not women, because.
Yeah, my dad worked for General Motors during World War II, and he had a certain amount of security. And he looked up his birth certificate and said, unnamed baby boy Olson. So, he had to prove he wasn't D, that unnamed baby boy.
That's funny.
Okay.
Actually, you take your birth certificate and your marriage license.
Bill? Glad your knee's doing better. Something happen, it locked up on you?
Yeah, I was playing in Maryland, died over exercise, that I did too much to it, and the doctor had a real fancy name for it, but basically, the body thinks that the same thing has happened to it that happened a year ago. And, you know, the, the brain, I mean, the brain understands it had the knee replaced, but the body doesn't. And so, basically, the knee just shut down. I couldn't, I couldn't walk on it, I couldn't bend it, anything, and apparently, it's fairly common, it's just one of the things the doctor failed to tell me. But, I mean, it's getting better, you know, by the day, by the weeks, but.
Wow, that's weird.
Kind of a strange situation.
Yeah. Well, glad it's better.
Yeah.
Dick, anything?
Oh, yeah, I'm sometimes reminded of a meeting back in 1973, when I suggested to the council that, also can't hear me, I know, that, that we're doing the public's business, and so we have to let the public talk, and not limit them to 30 seconds or three minutes, whatever we were doing at the time. And I'm usually happy to see my constituents take full advantage of my action at that time. And we got a demonstration of that tonight. Bill takes full advantage.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Rich? Okay, Rich? Floyd? And I didn't have anything? Wes?
Just briefly, I had mentioned to the council on Monday, the request from Javier Cervantes of our Human Relations Commission to have the city co-sponsor an event, a know your rights event. The council had asked if that event is being sponsored by LBCC, and the answer is yes, it is. And so, based on the feedback that you gave me, my plan was to inform Javier that you had no problems with their use of the city logo as a co-sponsor.
So, it's the city sponsoring, not the commission?
Well, no, it is.
There's, there are agents working on our.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's, it, co-sponsoring. I mean, we're not really, co-sponsoring just means that the city logo can go up next to the LB logo.
Yeah, and I'll be there for that event, yeah. Okay, all right, is that it? Staff, have anything? So, all right. Okay, then we have work session June 20th and regular session June 22nd. But also remember, the CARA board meeting was canceled next week, but we still have the ARA meeting at the 15.
As you said so.
Yeah.
There is a, yes, and there's an item of business here, so it's probably more than just five minutes.
Okay, yeah, all right. With that, we adjourn, thank you, folks. You did that.
We'll do it. Thank you.
One second. One second.